This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs City Council will come to order. Madam President, please.
James DeVito.
Here.
Orca Raphael.
Here.
Lanny Balance.
Here.
Butch Berry.
Here.
Kent Powell.
Here.
Everybody please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of agenda.
How do you approve?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to add in a new business number seven, action of vacancy in Ward One, Position One.
Second.
New business? Number seven. Anybody else?
Yes.
I'd like to postpone number five under old business until the second meeting in June.
Second.
Okay, postpone limo regulation ordinance until May the 30th?
Twenty-fifth.
February 25th?
Six twenty-five.
Sixty.
Six twenty-five.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Pennau.
Discussion of the meeting that's scheduled for the end of the month, I don't know the exact day, the 30th I believe.
Thirty.
Yes? Where?
Number eight.
I'm having a hard time hearing.
I had to turn that up. Mr. Pennau, I didn't hear where you want that.
Well, it's not unfinished, so I guess it's new business number eight.
What was it?
The second meeting day in May, May 30th.
Okay. Anybody else? I thought somebody did. Was there a second on that? I thought it was the same. I thought Mr. Weaver.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. There's no further. Approval of the agenda is amended, additions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Agenda's approved. Next approval of minutes for... April 23rd, 2012.
Move to approve.
Second.
Made in seconded. Any discussion? additions, additions.
Under unfinished business, item two. Let's see, one, two, three, four. Fifth paragraph begins, "Mayor Pate then asked for Mr. Weaver's opinion. I would like at that point, immediately following that sentence, to have added that Ms. Balance called point of order several times." And that would have been regarding... Calling the question.
Any further? Okay, thank you. Do a second on that.
I don't know that we've required seconds when people wanted additions for...
Anything else? Not? Most approved agenda is amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ministry approved. Okay, Commission Committee Authority Report inspired terms. Under planning, you should have a application for Melissa Green, position number five. And you should have a application for Denny Flaherty, position number seven. So consider those two for nomination. Mr. Weaver. Up. Weaver? Let me say something over. Planning?
I know you haven't received things from the planning commission for a while, but we have been working diligently, and this week we sent you three items. One is because there's a word weekly in the definition of dwelling unit, and what is happening is people from other places are buying our residential homes, and when they're not here, they're renting them out. And our code says that they can rent them out if it's weekly, monthly, or yearly basis. And so what it's doing is circumventing the system. We make all the other people get licenses, business license, for their tourist lodgings. We have them pay CAPC taxes, and because that word weekly is in there, this is kind of going around, around the system. So what I would like for you to do is hopefully put that on the next agenda so that we can discuss it. Also, the... There is nothing in our city code that has building projects making them come to planning. Anything can be built, and there's nothing in code that says they have to come to planning. So I also sent you something, our recommendation, and we would like that to also be added to the next agenda. And the last thing that we sent you this week, and we would also like it to be added to the next agenda, is the recommendation to revisions of Appendix A in your municipal code. It's the things that are legally non-conforming. There have been some changes in the past that have never made it into code, and we would like to discuss that with you. So if you could please add that to your next agenda, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, is there anybody here from CPC?
Mr. Mayor, could I address an issue?
Yes, you can.
Being as I'm council's liaison to the CAPC, I wanted to report where we stand financially through the first four months of the year. January collections, which reflect December, since we're behind a month in each collection, was up 4.8 percent. February collections were up 7.7 percent. March collections were up 12 percent. And April collections were up 19.73 percent. So for the year, we're showing a 19.73 percent increase. I'm sorry, it was 18.94. So overall, we're showing a year-to-date total collections compared to this month last year is up 19.73. So with our new director at the CAPC and the new implementation of the projects and our advertising campaigns, we're showing significant growth in the CAPC. So that bodes well for our general revenue tax collections because, in essence, the CAPC is the advertising arm of the city. So as the CAPC does its job effectively, the general revenues in the city will increase accordingly. So I think this shows well for a little over the first quarter for the year for the CAPC.
Thank you, sir. All right, next would be the hospital. I'm withdrawing John Dosie's nomination. So we'll have another one soon, I hope. For parks? No action? For HDC, you were given applications for Dan Hebert, position number three, and Susie Allen, position number seven, I believe, isn't it? Seven, yeah. It should be number seven. Yeah. So I'll make that correction. You want to do that now? Mr. Pennau.
Move to approve Susie Allen, position seven.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Discussion, please.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I, for some reason, I have not received the application for Mr. Hebert or Ms. Allen. I don't have any idea why, but I...
Everybody should have got one.
Well, I didn't. And generally speaking, if I'm not familiar with these people, generally speaking, if I don't know the people, I'd like to give them a call and just chat with them a little bit and see.
We would welcome your call.
So if possible, could we please postpone these until next meeting so that I might have a chance to receive those applications and contact these people?
Did everybody else get these applications? I want to make sure this...
The only thing I'd like to ask is if anybody else had contacted with Mr. Hebert or Amber, however you pronounce his name, because the number on his application is not a working number.
Okay. I spoke to him last week. Okay.
I'd move to postpone.
Spun us.
I'm withdrawing my motion.
Mr. Dallas Miedon, Mr. DeVito, second. All in favor of postponing on Mr. Hebert and Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, gentlemen.
We'll make sure that you get a copy of this.
Thank you.
And apologize for your nonheaven. No action on cemetery? Ms. Balance, you have anything on yellow bag?
I do, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I've received some calls from some rather elderly residents who say, if we must use the bags, could we... Could they please possibly have the option of purchasing drawstring bags? They say it's very difficult for them to manipulate the twist ties, and they would be willing to pay a little bit extra for the option of buying drawstring bags. So perhaps we could look into that.
We can definitely check on that.
All right. And I've had several people suggest that perhaps this is an issue that should be put on the ballot for the people to vote on, whether they wish to continue using yellow bags or not at the next general election. So I'm kind of throwing out that for discussion. So the people can actually say whether they want them or not. Some people contact me and say they don't want them, some people contact my other colleagues and say they do. So perhaps we could put it on the ballot so everybody can actually weigh in and say whether they would like to continue using these or not. Then, of course, if they vote them down, then we'll, of course, we'll have to rework our contract so we can move from that point.
Anybody else?
Sure.
Okay. Then I would move to add this to the ballot for the next general election.
Point of order?
Yes.
This needs to come to the table in a timely fashion so that the public has a chance to be made awares of this. Our procedure has been to put an item on the agenda with a two-week notice. This has just come out of the blue. I feel it's appropriate to go through the proper procedures.
I don't have any problem with that. Maybe, shall we add it to the next agenda, then?
Is there any, is there going to be any problems with the contract doing this? Because it'll have to be re-completed again.
It would be a problem with the contract if there was a vote to be taken. The vote could specify that it was to be upon any renewal only, potentially, but if it was to take effect immediately upon passage or approval by the populace, yes, it'd create a great big problem with the contract.
Well, then I would move to add a discussion of adding yellow bags to the ballot. How should I word that? To add to the next agenda, a discussion of...
Discussion would be fine, yeah, just like that.
All right.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion to add discussion of yellow bags to the next agenda for addition to the ballot. Is that correct?
Yes.
In the second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Mr. Pennau?
I didn't think we had a vote on putting those on the agenda, but we were able to...
Okay. That's good, sir. Okay. Further on the yellow bags?
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Next would be the deer hunt. We have ordered 50 doe tags, or 50 tags, for the next hunt. Gaming fish has told us pretty much they've approved their application, and from this point on, it'll be up to us to follow through it. We're going full tilt from this point on. So we'll let everybody know we're just going to be a deer committee. Okay? Nothing else? We were up to public comments. As soon as we get the clipboard, we'll follow through. Okay. First on the list is Mickey Schneider. Hi, Mickey.
Hi, I'm Mickey Schneider. Most people know who I am. I've been here 38 years. I'm a firm believer in it takes the whole town to make us viable, and that means merchants, artists, and residents. Even when it's against my own personal feelings, I have always voted for the city, so I am throwing in my hat for my opponent's seat. I'm volunteering yet again. I love this town. I want to keep her going. Just wanted to let you all know, I'm available if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Enid Schwartz.
Hello, everyone. My name is Enid Schwartz, and I have something that I would like to present the city that I bought for the city. It is Earth, the Operator's Manual. It was put on PBS, a program that where the city, different small cities challenge other small cities on an ecological basis. Kansas did this, and I could really see us doing it in Arkansas. It says, "Instead of waiting for Washington, these folks are rolling up their sleeves and meeting the challenges head-on. In the process, they're becoming energy efficient, saving a buck, protecting the environment, and securing the future for our kids and our country." This third program in the Earth, the Operator's Manual series, is not about a red or blue America, but about the power of people who want to move beyond political labels, debates, and paralysis to build a more productive, prosperous, and sustainable future. It will leave you inspired and optimistic. And so there it is. It says, "For more about what you can do to re-energize your community, visit Earth, the Operator Manual." This runs about 90 minutes. I would love to have the council have a workshop where they can view this. After they've viewed it, see if you feel that it is worthy of having a special viewing in the auditorium for the city. So there it is. I hope you will do this. It's a gift from me to you. I found it very, very helpful and exciting to watch it. It was just really neat. And then I also just want to have somebody sign this because I'd like to take it off of my income tax as a gift. So... Thank you. Thanks much.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Okay. Next is Karen Lindblad.
Hello, my name's Karen Lindblad. I've lived in Eureka for 38 years, and I've had a business here for 35 and a half. First, I wanted to thank Dean Kirkpatrick for the time that he's been on council because having been on council before, I know the time and energy that it takes to do the council's business. I've had quite a few people ask me to come forward to say that I would be willing to serve on council again, so here I am. I served for two years before. I've always been for the citizens of Eureka Springs. I think this is a fabulous town, and I think that it would be wonderful for it to carry on in a really good fashion, but I think it's really important that the citizens of the town be fully represented, represented. So I'm just saying that if the council decides that they would like for me to serve, I would be willing to serve again happily. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Tom Tharp.
Hey, guys. I'm hoping when you all consider your choices for the empty council seat that you look for, in my opinion, a business owner who is pro-business in town, somebody who's looking out for the small business owners as well as the bigger business owners, because without the businesses, we don't have tourists. Without tourists, we don't have citizens. So the citizens do need representation, which they get occasionally. Business owners need it too. So don't forget us.
Thanks, sir. Susan? Susan Tharp. I think she's outside. Here she comes. Hi, Susan.
Thank you. Council members and mayor, olden days carriage has made our best effort in every meeting to attend and be available for questions and explain why we wanted specific changes to the carriage ordinance. After losing several days of income, we've been here, you know, had to pay babysitters, had to pay help to cover us where we can't be doing our business. Several you did not attend the workshop, and several meetings were postponed for the same reason. Council decided to exclude Sections S and T from the new draft of the carriage ordinance. After once again being totally ignored, I would like to give the reasons why we would like to reword Section T to be in the attorney's approval and the necessity to limit hours of operations on Section S. Section S, in understanding this would limit our hours, we have found it unsafe to be on any streets, any streets, before 4:00 p.m. At that time, traffic seems to slow down, and with most of the shopping closing at 5:00, this safety concern especially applies on Saturdays. Section T, this was probably the most important part we wanted added. We understand according to the ruling you just received that the city can regulate city-based commerce on a state highway. Sections that are within the city limits, with a proper wording of the section, it can and should remain in the ordinance. As being, as for it to be redundant, this section is meant to help guide future councils in that they will not have the knowledge that the police chief has recommended that carriages are not for hire on Highway 62, or should not be for hire on Highway 62. I would also recommend that a permanent written description of each franchise route be added to the ordinance to further help future councils as to where each franchise route is. I have written descriptions for the Main Street franchise and the Upper Historical Loop franchise, and it is prepared and ready to submit to the clerk if this would be of any help. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Becky Gillett. Hi, Becky.
I want to thank you for putting the move to amend resolution on the agenda tonight and encourage you to make us proud in Eureka by being the first city in Arkansas to join with dozens of cities across the country in supporting a constitutional amendment to rein in corporate campaign spending and return the power of our government to the people. I don't think there's anything more important for us that are working on both sides of, you know, both sides of issues. I think that we all know that money can corrupt politics and that we need to do something about it. At the same time, I wanted to let you know that our local Occupy group is working with groups throughout the state on a proposed state statute change that would do the same thing based on the state elections. This is called the Campaign Finance and Lobby Reform Act of 2012. I've lived most of my life in other states. Arkansas is unique and wonderful in that you have a referendum process where people can put something before the people to vote on. Not all states have this. It's a pretty nifty deal. So if the legislature doesn't do something you want, the people can get together, gather enough signatures, and put it on the ballot. We are in the process of gathering signatures to put this on the ballot. As a journalist, I was taught in journalism school that I should not accept as much as a cup of coffee from a source because this could influence my reporting. I would argue that our elected officials have even more of important responsibility than journalists, and they shouldn't be taking money and gifts from lobbyists that then influences how they vote on their legislation. This proposed amendment would be, I mean, not amendment, but the referendum in November would make it illegal for anybody, any elected officials, to take gifts from lobbyists. You would not be allowed to take gifts or campaign contributions from corporations, and campaign contributions would be limited to $2,000 from individuals only. So I hope that you will in tonight's work on, as you work on the national level and later discuss this move to amend resolution, that you also are aware of the state effort. And if somebody comes up and asks you to sign the Lobby Reform Act, I hope you will. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Denny Flaherty.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Lady, and Commissioners of the City of Eureka Springs, I'm Denny Flaherty. I am at this time serving on our Planning and Zoning Board, and I live in Ward One. And since the doctor has resigned from the seat, I would like to put my name into consideration for that appointment. I have spent 12 years actively participating in the city I came from in Florida on every board that we have. I was an activist. One thing I understand, I sat at the meeting the other day, and communication seems to be the most important thing that we could give each other. And I would like to participate in that, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else in public comment out in the hall? If not, then we'll move on to unfinished business. Oh. That's me. Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. Number one has been postponed. Number two regarding hospital, and it says CEO and accountant on the agenda. Motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
Made in seconded. Floor is open.
Any of those people here?
Are you? Any accountants outside? Who do you want first? Rusty, come on in. How you doing, sir?
Good, Mayor.
Mr. Wendell is the accountant for the hospital commission. You have questions for him?
General question, whoever wants to answer it can. I was told that there was a meeting a couple months ago with the full commission and the mayor after the times that we've asked for meeting with both said parties with allegiance. I would like to know the status of the letter of intent to proceed in moving forward that allegiance said that they were going to provide in building a new hospital within the city limits.
You got that? Rusty, I guess you can step back. No, I said that's Rusty. You can step back. Don't confuse me.
I need to go. I'm pretty loud.
Yeah, go ahead. Please do.
Indeed, we, we met a couple of months ago.
Introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. I'm Chris Beddoe with Allegiance Health Management out of Shreveport. Sir, to answer your question, we met a couple of months ago with the position that we wanted to work collectively with the commission in the building of a new hospital. We submitted a proposal to the commission, whereas both of us would embark on a new lease to build a new hospital. It was later brought to our attention that the commission said that they would be unable to engage in any, any dollars necessary, or would they be unable to provide any of the, any of the money in building the new hospital, whereas at this point, it's kind of tabled.
You understand the reason we cannot give them money. It's against the statute. We cannot give to a for-profit.
Yeah, hang on a second.
About who they are, please?
Yeah. Just Pam, step up there.
Come on.
Pam Crockett's hospital commission.
The reason we cannot directly give cash, Rock Bordelon, who runs Allegiance, came to us and asked us to help him. If he built the hospital, would we assist in paying the mortgage payment? Our attorney says because we are an entity of nonprofit, we cannot use the monies that we have collected to pay for a profit organization. We can't give the nonprofit money to them to build a hospital. I mean, our hands are tied.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Can we continue with the other, Chris, if we could? I'm just curious of why we've requested for months now that a meeting be held and then to find out today that Allegiance and the full hospital commission and the mayor met at the end of the Ozarks several months ago without notifying the city council just totally appalls me.
Because we don't need to notify you, sir. We don't need to notify you of the meeting. All we have to notify is the gentleman sitting at the end of the room down here, Nick, and he's known about the meetings for how long now?
Eleven years.
Yes. Thank you. It's a commission meeting, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Is it not a requirement that the public be notified?
It's, it's a requirement for the press to be notified.
But not the public?
So the public should ipso facto be notified through the press? Is that what you're saying?
I believe Mr. Powell got a email stating that, let's see. Mr. Powell, if you can recall that email from Mr. Shawna, I believe it was, about, I believe it was Mr. Shawna, or it was one of your questions from Mr. Wade. You can find that one.
From Mr. Who?
Chris, is it Seth Ward? Seth Ward, I'm sorry. I have, yeah, I have trouble with all the names.
Well, I find, I find the answer that you gave totally unacceptable because it's been on the agenda, and I, I think it would have been normal prudent procedure to notify council that this, and I think all we've done has been put into a mushroom position. Because the other thing that I, that I understood from this meeting is that Mr. Bordelon was told that there, there could be no funding provided by the hospital commission, but to kick off the new hospital issue, that there were two ideas that needed to be supported. One was community lender, lender support and that he requested part of the home healthcare money that's currently an average of right around $300,000 a year. So that, that whole issue is totally off the table of building a new hospital. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, sir.
I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying it's off the table. I'm saying that I'm, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm not saying it's off the table. I'm saying that it's over my pay grade for me to be able to make that assessment whether we would build a hospital or not. I think Mr., I think I can speak for Mr. Bordelon and say that I'm sure he's evaluating the options as it relates to building a new hospital, but our intent going into the meetings to see if the commission indeed could help in the, in the build of the new hospital. And as Dean come back from the commission, that they were unable to do so. So I think we're back to the drawing boards.
In regards to your questions about the, the meeting issue, number three on Mr. Ward's reply to your questions, explain why even though it was stated in the last council meeting that the commission meets on the third Monday of every month at 6:00 p.m. at various locations, why that information is not published to the general public? His answer is the Arkansas Freedom of Information Act requires the time and place of each regular meeting shall be furnished to anyone who requests such information. We are unaware that any legal authority that requires the commission to publish to the general public its meeting times and locations.
It's supposed to be published at a public place or newspaper?
Sir, this is from the hospital's attorney, the hospital ward's attorney.
Please, sir, you interrupted him, please.
No, I didn't. I was answering the question, starting with.
Oh, well, can you mind answering a couple more while you're up there?
Sure.
Go ahead.
It's, and I find it amazing that it, I'm, I'm just now finding this out, and you can just say yes or no. It's my understanding that all the Eureka Springs Hospital employees are now Allegiance employees. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And that all of the HR, major billing, anything like that has been moved to your Shreveport location therefore?
As it's done in every one of our other small hospitals.
So there.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
So there, so there's no other, it's my understanding then that there's no other, with that being said, that basically there's nothing more than an operational shell at the current Eureka Springs Hospital?
Oh, that's, that's not, that's not a correct statement. We, we have HR guys and AP guys on the ground there. Basically, what happens is that the management team on the ground makes the determination of the daily business and what needs to happen. They send it to Shreveport, just as we do in Dartmouth, Arcadia, Louisiana, and a number of our other small, Midland, Texas, other small hospitals that we own. They send it to Shreveport, which is merely a passer, but no, it's not a shell by any means. And I welcome you to go tour the hospital and meet with Jody and the staff so that you can, you can confirm that it's not a shell.
And one last question is, and again, I don't know who to direct it to. I understand that after the meeting that was held at end of the Ozarks, there was a forecommissioner telecon with Mr. Ordigo. If that's the case, I'd like to know if Mr. Boyett was in on that telephone conversation?
Are you talking about Bordelon? I don't know who Boyett is. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was telling you, I was told he was notified of all the meetings, so I'd like to know if. Okay, thank you.
What was his answer?
No.
No? He was not notified.
That's all I have at this time.
Can I, can I?
Please do.
Please understand that Mr. Ordigo is not, Mr. Ordigo is not a representative of our company, so Allegiance wouldn't have been a part of that conference call or one of those meetings.
I clarified that at the beginning of the question.
We do have the current hospital administrator here. Would you like to say anything?
Hello, I'm Jody Love, I'm the administrator.
Please step up to the mic.
Let's kind of credit on this, eh?
Just that I am Jody Love, I'm the new hospital administrator. I certainly would welcome any of you, if you certainly would like to come and to, to look at the facility. We certainly are a full-service working hospital, so if there's any questions regarding that, just let me know.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Eureka, I want you to come up and introduce yourself, since you've traveled all the way up here.
My name is Richard Reynolds. I'm just in-house counsel for Allegiance, and they brought me here just in case an issue came up.
Any questions to him while he's here? Because this will be your only chance, Ms. Balance.
I'll come back if you ask me.
I don't know who to direct this question to, but when we look at chapter 260, when we look in the, in the state statutes, and we look at chapter 264, Commissions for Municipal Hospitals, we look at 14-264-104, Commissioners, Powers and Duties, Liability. 14-264-104C states, "The commissioners, however, by and with the consent of city council, shall have the authority and power to lease the hospital to a nonprofit or benevolent organization upon such terms that no profit or dividend shall ever be paid to any person, firm, or corporation." We have just heard that this is indeed a for-profit organization, and state statute specifically, specifically excludes us from entering into a lease for the, with the hospital for, with a nonprofit or benevolent organization. So it would seem to me that the contract that exists is void because this city is not allowed to lease the hospital to a nonprofit, or is not allowed to lease the hospital to a profit organization. Shall have the power, the authority and power to lease the hospital to a nonprofit or benevolent organization, and by their own admissions, they are a for-profit organization. So it may be that the contract is indeed void.
Ma'am, I'm not in a position to comment on the statute at this point in time.
Who is?
I mean, I'd be happy to take a look at it. We probably would engage local council to get less on opinion on the statute.
Well, the statute says, "The commissioners, however, by and with the consent of city council, shall have the authority and power to lease the hospital to a nonprofit or benevolent organization." Y'all are not a nonprofit or benevolent organization. What's going on here?
Ma'am, I have not looked at the statute yet. I can't give you an opinion on that today.
Perhaps our learned attorney would, would care to weigh in on this?
No.
No? You are the city attorney. You are responsible for representing the city, for making sure that things go according to state statute, according to city code, and you're refusing to address this issue?
You're presenting a brand-new issue to me also. You want me to?
How long have you been the city attorney?
I've been the city attorney 10 years.
Ms. Balance.
And you've never read?
Ms. Balance.
You've never read?
Ms. Balance. Stop. The point of order's been called.
Well, a point of order not called by us, and we ignored it for hours, so what the heck?
Are you going to finish?
Maybe I will.
Mr. Weaver was trying to answer your question. He stated he was brand-new to him. What is the problem? If he hasn't had time to research it? Your question.
My question is, what are we doing with a, with a contract with a for-profit organization when state statute specifically forbids it?
Apparently.
That's my question. I'd like to have an answer as soon as possible.
Mr. Mayor, do we have a, do you have an answer? I mean, I think this had been. That's what I thought.
Mr. Ward answered all these questions in the email.
And what was his answer?
It says to refer to state statute 14-265-103 and the Eureka Springs City Council Resolution 544. The city council approved that this management contract go forward. The hospital was about to close its doors. Allegiance and Rock Bordelon came to this council and said that they would keep our hospital open.
Would you care to stand up to the mic and repeat that, please?
When? In the spring of 2007, I guess maybe in 2005, the hospital commission hired another management company to take over, to run the hospital for us. The hospital was within $30,000 of losing, of shutting its doors. The management company came in, helped pull it up by its bootstraps, and even though we were unable to pay all the bills, that management group called Health, Craig Ordigo's company, pulled that hospital out of the dungeons because we were close to closing. He also brought us LHC, which is a home health group.
A for-profit?
A for-profit home health group. We did not have the money to run home health. We were broke. He brought us a company to run home health. They use our license, okay, and they run a home health program, and they agreed to infuse $300,000 into the hospital so that we could keep the doors open. You understand, this is the only critical access hospital in the state of Arkansas that gets no money from you. No tax money comes to run that hospital. It's the management of the funds collecting Medicare and Medicaid. There would be no hospital if we had not had appropriate management groups there. Mr. Ordigo then met Mr. Bordelon. Mr. Ordigo, talking with Rock Bordelon, who runs Allegiance, came to us and said, "We'll run the hospital, and with you, we will build a hospital, a new hospital." That was the original agreement with Allegiance. That hospital's still open because of Allegiance.
So because you were almost out of money, that gave you the authority to go against the statute?
The council gave us the authority. The council did it. You were here. That's the resolution 544. The city council passed a resolution allowing us to go into a management contract with Allegiance to keep the hospital open, hopefully to get a new hospital.
Well, even though, even, let me say this at this juncture. Your raising your voice will not convince me that you're right, and regardless, regardless, state statute says, strictly says, that we shall not enter into a contract with a for-profit. It has to be a nonprofit or benevolent organization. Are you, are you interrupting me?
Yes, ma'am, she is. And it's not your place to call it.
Well, then why don't you?
Because you don't give me a chance.
Well, we're out of compliance with state statute again. I'm not sure if we have any contracts that are in compliance with state statute.
Mr. Ward answered that question in the emails, number one, 14-265-103 and Resolution 544. If you want to go back and redo 544, then.
Under what, I'm sorry for interrupting. Under what authority did they do that, mayor? Under what authority? State statute says they shouldn't do that. They went ahead and did it anyway. What's the deal?
State council. I wasn't there. I don't know.
I don't either.
Yeah, so that's what we're trying to find out.
Right.
Mr. Powell.
That's, that's part of it. I was there on the July 23, '07 meeting, and the minutes stated, and Ms. Crockett read a lot of statement announcing that AHM, which is Allegiance, I was getting confused with Quality Health Network with Mr. Ordigo, wants to take over management of the hospital and has proposed building a for-profit 25 million, 25-bed hospital within the next five years inside the city limits. She, she presented Resolution 544, supporting the hospital commission's decision to enter into contracts with AHM for management and construction of the new hospital. And I know based on conversations that happened at the table at the time, that that was one of the factors that caused council to pass and read that resolution. Also. Also, um, I would like, since, uh, we've been required to, uh, not be able to communicate necessarily incognito with the municipal league, uh, read Mr. Shaw's reply to the, to the one question that was made about the, uh, the validity of the contract. Uh, he goes into a lengthy, that he doesn't have, uh, the charge of resources to conduct the type of an investigation required, so apparently there must need to be an investigation. Uh, it says, on the other hand, "The contract may be void if one of the parties lacked authority to enter into it, although generally a city must pay for benefits that is already accepted." So, yes, we have a voidable contract, and I'm not a lawyer, but that's the answer from municipal league.
Okay. In regards to the issue with Mr. Shaw and no incognito correspondence, that was a request of the council, members of the council. So, with that issue addressed, Mr. DeVito.
Well, unless somebody can find for me in state law or municipal code that we cannot enter into an agreement with a for-profit entity, then I would read here, uh, 14-265-103, "Authority to acquire, own, manage, and sell health facilities. Any municipality and any county is authorized to acquire, own, construct, reconstruct, extend, equip, improve, maintain, operate, sell, lease, contract concerning or otherwise dealing or dispose of any land, buildings, improvements, or facilities of any and every nature, whatever that can be used for hospitals, nursing homes, rest homes, or related facilities within or near the municipality or county." Black and white to me, that I'm going to choose 14-265-103 because it is more germane to the issue we are discussing here, and it is very clear that it allows lease. So, uh, unless you can find something that says you can't, the law states that you are able to. So we can't just cherry pick what we want out of municipal and, and state regs to back our arguments.
Ms. Balance.
Again, ACA 14-264-104, ACA 14-264-104(c) states, "The commissioners, however, by and with the consent of city council, shall have the authority and power to lease the hospital to a nonprofit or benevolent organization."
Yes, ma'am.
And I think the legislature in their esteemed wisdom would have stated specifically that they would not be able to. They allow you that opportunity, they also allow you these other opportunities. Nowhere does it say you can't. They are affording you basic rights as a council to do these various things, and it's plainly clear in my reading, and I don't play an attorney on television, but I'm sure if the attorney's present would have the time, and I don't want any attorney to give me a, a rendering on the spot because they need to research these things, and I think they are both intelligent enough to know that they're not going to give you an opinion without researching the facts, and that includes all of the facts, not just the facts you choose to bring to the table.
Mr. Berry, do you have your hand up?
Yes, you know, we've heard from one attorney, um, from Little Rock, who, who quotes and states that, uh, the Hospital Commission can do this and have the authority to do this. We've, we're sitting here at the table, none of us are attorneys, with the exception of our city attorney, uh, who says that he has not researched this. The municipal league attorney was only giving the statute pertaining to 264, which, uh, Ms. Balance is, is correct, says that they can't do it, but the attorney was quoting the statute 265, which states that we can. I think we all want to find out and make sure that what, what is being done is legal. I don't think we all want to sit around here fighting over this thing. And we have obviously an attorney's opinion, one attorney's, that says, you know, what was done four or five years ago was legal. Uh, I think if it had not been legal, then we would have been into a lawsuit since then. And I understand we were doing that because we were about to lose our hospital. And I don't know, most of us, at least I, think we need our hospital here. I know there's a lot of people who feel that this county can only use one hospital, but I think we went through that whole scenario and how important it is for Holiday Island and for this critical care. And you're absolutely right, we are a unique situation in being able to get the critical care, and I believe it was Alliance that got the critical care designation, which allowed the hospital to stay open. So I'm still not sure what we are trying to find here, if we are trying to find some illegalities. You know, I'm sure, I don't know whether we, you know, we can or we can't. I mean, that's why they have attorneys. And obviously, one attorney says that what we're doing is not illegal. Now, I guess if, and I think Mr. Pannell, when he started, when he quotes, uh, the municipal league attorney, talking about the type of investigation, I'm sure he could also say the type of research required, uh, similar to what our city attorney said, because it does take a lot of time and, and, you know, I'm not sure what exactly we're trying to prove here. If we're trying to prove something's illegal, not being done copestically if we want to try to shut down the hospital, I don't know what we're trying to prove. Uh, what I'd like to do is see what kind of resolution, what we need to do to move on with this. I'm not sure where we are, but it appears that we leave at least one attorney saying that what's going on is legal. And, you know, that's all I know for this point.
To answer Ms. Balance's and Mr. Berry's, uh, I think somewhat similar question, you have an opinion of an attorney that was paid by the commission, which they've always had their own separate attorneys, uh, that's passed down through a series of attorneys. You've got a paid-for opinion. If you want to pay for another one, the city attorney is paid by the hour, by ordinance of this city. If you want to direct me to do it, I think the gentleman behind me here also said that he could do it, if he's directed to do so, I suppose, by his employer. But you have an opinion that was rendered for a commission of this city that was paid for through their own attorney. It's not like they took some outside attorney's opinion. They had it reviewed on their part at, apparently, Mr. Pannell's request. You can seek many, many attorney's opinions, and you may find a variation between those attorney's opinions of whether something is legal or not. And that's what you end up in court. But right now you've got an opinion from an attorney by a commission that is part of this city that says it's proper. Until you want to question that in another form, I would suggest you're wasting the city's finances to ask for an opinion unless you have reasonable grounds. You have an opinion before you.
Ms. Balance.
Well, since an opinion is an opinion is an opinion until it's backed up by case law, um, what are our options for hiring outside legal opinion?
Why would you obtain outside legal opinion?
Why shouldn't we?
That would be through the mayor's office, by your ordinance.
I'll read up on that, thank you, ma'am.
And with my consent.
Mr. DeVito.
We have a functioning hospital in the city. It's not costing the city any money. The opinion of an attorney is it's perfectly legal. Now, why would anybody want to take that apart? I don't understand. If you can give me a reason, a motivation behind why you want to question a working hospital in Eureka Springs, because you have this suspicion that's not founded in any legal opinions, I will not be party to it. I will do everything I can to stop you from using city resources to potentially cause the loss of the city hospital. Because that's the path that I feel you're headed down, and I'm not going to be a party of it.
Mr. Berry, do you have your hand up?
Yes, yeah, you know, um, the commission hires, the hospital commission has and hired a, an attorney who specializes, um, in hospital law. Uh, with no respect, disrespect to our city attorney, I really don't question his, uh, expertise in hospital law. Uh, that's why you have special, uh, specialty attorneys. Um, you know, I think our city attorney does a good job in what he's doing, but the hospital, this is a specialty law. I know they, I forgot what it was going to cost, $3,000 to get the attorney to come up here, um, but certainly above our city attorney's pay grade, uh, again, no offense.
Taken.
But, so again, I'm not sure where we're trying to go with this. Uh, to me, that's probably, the commission is representing the city, and they have taken upon themselves to hire what they think is the best attorney for their, uh, commission. So I'm still not sure where we're trying to go with this.
Got no clues, sir. Any further, gentlemen? Y'all have anything to add? Ma'am?
Let's turn this, take a look.
Okay, nothing else, we move on.